All right, and it's eight o'clock. So I think we'll kick off the meeting. To discuss how we're going to do elections this year in town meeting. And maybe just probably, well, not what John wants to say a few words, or at least probably what we have in front of us is that. Oops. The document that the town clerk sent out yesterday to describe, you know, what could happen with a March ninth town meeting or town election? Or what we might need to do in order to satisfy time limits. It will drive through and maybe in April voting. So I'm thinking if anyone wants to make a comment on that, I'm actually probably like seeking probably John's input to see, you know, what he might think of. One versus the other, or do we have a problem with an April? Meeting.
Can I say something first? This is Bob. Yeah. The way this proposal is set up is that regular elections are held in in March for all of the town officers, for the school districts, for everything else, and this is only for the warrant session. For the town, town meeting. So originally, when we started talking about this, all the other departments would have had issues because of voting. If we go this route, it doesn't affect the school districts and the water.
So. Yeah. Um, I had contacted Bud Fitch after Dan had spoke at the last meeting because I was a little concerned about time restraints.
You're locked.
Frozen in time.
Yep.
Is this when I break into let it go, let it go?
Hey, Josie.
And.
You were you were locked up there for, you know, 30 seconds, 20 seconds. And you still are.
Seven problems.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
And now. Not anymore.
Let me call in.
Or top upstairs.
Okay, here, I'll come upstairs. One second.
Okay, we'll give you a mic. Oh, wear a mask.
So we're looking at April and not May.
What's that?
We're looking at April and not May.
Well, that's theoretically, that looks like it's kind of satisfied timeframe.
I'm just thinking, May, May would be a little warmer if we had to do something out for us.
Can everyone hear me now?
Well.
Hi, okay, I'm here. Um, so per my discussion with Bud Fitch, he explained that we can have, and we should have. That we can host the deliberative sessions in February, and he recommends that we get started as soon as possible on the process. The issue is absentee voters have the right to all ballots, he said. Really? The original schedule that I sent out, we could make that work, but it puts all of us in a really difficult time crunch. Where we can't necessarily meet deadlines because there's too many factors involved, like whether the printing company can get us a thousand ballots in one day. Or over a weekend. So the other problem is I would have to stuff, I'd have one day to stuff hundreds of absentee ballots and mail those out to voters. We're talking about, you know, based on last year's numbers, we could see as over 500 absentee ballot requests. That's a lot of work. We can do it, but that would only give absentee voters less than really, it seems like two weeks, but with the postal service and how delayed it is, they'd have less than a week and a half to return those ballots to me. And if they're residing in Florida temporarily, really, they most likely won't be able to guarantee the, I can't guarantee that we'll receive those ballots in time. And nor would I feel comfortable only giving absentee voters two weeks to vote. So what I suggested is this alternative drive-through schedule, drive-through voting schedule. I think that will give all of us enough time to prepare for voting day. And also, the nice thing about this alternative ballot and having the the drive-through election for on the Warren articles is it will require less resources from us, really only Bob, myself, maybe some of the selectmen and the supervisors to be there and depending depending where we are, you know, it'll be at most three hours, I think. Or whatever the board and Bob decides on a timeframe, but we wouldn't require many volunteers to do this. So that's my thought on it.
I want to defer also to Terry Radigan, who's going to be defending us. Should anything come up that might challenge this, but have you had a chance to take a look at the alternative? Too, and you think that there's, you see the need to go with an alternative? That would allow a more adequate time to vote.
Well, I hadn't, I hadn't seen the alternative that Jess set out, but the do you think that if you want to stick with the March election, I mean, you'd be preparing, preparing absentee ballots for that anyway, you know?
I'd be receiving those ballots way ahead of time. I submit that information, really, the beginning of February. So those ballots are mailed out mid-February. I'd have to hold all the absentee ballots until we have this, the the final Warren, or I should say, alternative ballot on the Warren articles. So I could mail out all the absentee ballots early and wait on sending out the Warren article ballot, but still it won't give residents enough time to respond. And it would be a lot of work having to go back to and a lot of extra postage to go back and mail out those Warren article ballots.
The I was looking at some information that I haven't, you know, analyzed yet, but I read it this morning from the NHMA, and they were suggesting in a publication that they put out that the right to vote by absentee ballot is for things that appear on the election ballot. So you're talking about election of officers and zoning amendments. And the things that are at the business section, they don't describe that as having a right to vote by absentee ballot.
So I actually called NHMA yesterday because I also saw that, and I do have a discussion planned with the executive director of NHMA today because it, what they're stating does not jive with what the state is stating regarding absentee ballots. You know, my thought is if we have the vote on the alternative ballot on Warren articles after Election Day, it's not an election ballot anymore. If we have it prior to Election Day, yes, it would be an election ballot because it's a ballot prior to, it's a ballot that really should be accessible to anyone who's voting, and this is the first time we've ever done this. I think it would be setting a bad precedent to not include that ballot along with the other absentees.
I mean, for instance, the information that I sent up to you from, you know, New Market and from Chesterfield. I mean, both of those are having, you know, so-called, you know, drive-by voting on the business section after virtual meetings. And the they're going to have voting by ballot, but they're not preparing absentee ballots.
Yeah, and I also brought up that example to the secretary, excuse me, Assistant Secretary of State Bud Fitch, and he was surprised by what Chesterfield is doing. He didn't recommend that we follow that example only because it really would, wouldn't give absentee voters the time to vote. So he's set on.
But I guess what I'm getting at here is that ordinarily, in a business section, no one votes by absentee ballot.
Right.
And so the, what has been described by by Mr. Fitch is actually creating something that's never occurred in New Hampshire. And so I think, I think, I think Bud might be revisiting this. A lot of this stuff is moving so quickly that not everyone has been able to have enough opportunity to think through these things.
Yeah.
So I think that Bud will probably revisit that because I cleared the New Market approach and the Chesterfield approach with the Attorney General's Office. And that was before the governor's emergency order came out. That was just acting on a House Bill 1129.
Does, does this mirror Senate Bill Two, which has been voted in in the school district and so forth, where they vote on the Warren article, and that's why the first article is that, do you accept this form of voting?
Yes, you'd still have that article, I believe, on, on, on the, on the business section of the.
Right. Does that change? The, anything there? Because now, okay.
Change. No, that does not change.
Okay.
So so anyway, I do think that, I agree with you, Josie, that if you had to put together absentee ballots for these second session, that would create some real time constraint problems, but I don't think that's the place we're going to end up.
We need an answer soon to get these things in place.
Yeah, no, I'll call Bud today and talk about it.
You know, even, even if, take absentee ballots out of, out of the situation, even if Bud's, you know, disagrees with what he said yesterday to me, it still puts us in a time crunch, and we have flexibility here. So I don't see the problem with pushing this off after town elections because it really does put us in a, you know, we'd have like a week to get the language for the postcard ready, and we're not considering that we have other jobs, think, you know, our responsibilities to, to do. You know, so I, that's my thought on it. I'm not opposed to pushing out the voting day on Warren articles. Yeah, and it being. Yeah, so that's, that's my thought on it.
All right, so. Which other, I just, I know it'd be in the water sewer, and no.
I think they're postponing.
So.
Well, I'm not sure what we're doing. Kim, do you know?
We had discussed going forward with a regular timeframe in March.
Yeah, that's what I thought, and I thought we were going to do it Zoom.
Well, we assumed that the the voting for elections would be the normal timeframe, and then we were going to have our meeting that Thursday in March, I think it's the 11th. Right after the town meeting is generally held following the usual program. Now, as far as I know, and unless something has changed in the last week or two, NHMA was saying there was no avenue for us to have the annual meeting portion by Zoom.
Okay.
Just as we did in April of this year, we, we had people on Zoom, but we had the required officials in the office and anyone who chose
Right.
in mass was able to come in and vote. The people on Zoom could listen in, but they are not allowed to vote. So that is what we had decided up to this point. But if elections are not happening in March, I think we, we have to.
Yeah, we're gonna have to think about something else then.
Yeah.
I think that we're talking elections happening in March, the town is.
Yeah.
Period. We're talking basically about the, the deliberative session for the town. So as I said at the prompt, that Water and Sewer School District, all of those ballots would be taken care of on regular Election Day. And the other districts would be free to do as they wish. I understand the Plummer School District wants to meet in person because they don't have that many people come. So Pemme Baker District, I had, has said that they're going to have a meeting. Is that correct, Lisa? You're on mute, Lisa.
So yeah, we're SB two, so our last meeting is Tuesday evening. We're going to be in the gym where we can spread out and social distance, require masks, and then those that don't want to wear masks can go in the Bobcat Cafe and we'll have technology hooked up in the Bobcat Cafe.
So everybody else is having regular, a form of a meeting. You know, our problem is we have more than 100 people come, so we can't have it in one place. And so my personal preference would be i- if you can get it done to do it all in one day, although to have a, that, there are going to be five ballots or six ballots there already. Because you've got the school district, you've got the school officers, you've got the water and sewer officers, you've got the town officers, you've got your zoning articles. You know, to add another Warren article that's now going to be multiple pages long. It's going to make it a real tough day. I would rather have the deliberative on a separate day. And I do like the plan that Josie has put in. You know, and whether we can send absentees or not, you know, that's a moot point. As far as I'm concerned, I think it would be much easier to separate the two so people have a clear understanding.
Bob, could I just ask to clarify how the, how the elections are going to be run?
Just like a regular election. We were, we have, we knew how, we know how to use the the PPE and to do it effectively with spacing like we did at the last elections. So it would be done that way. Normal procedures, just with lots of protection.
Okay, sounds good.
And I would, I would request that we're allowed to use the, the parking spots out front. If somebody does not want to come in, they would call a phone number, we would identify them and bring the stuff outside, and they can vote in their car, and we'll bring the stuff back in.
Thank you.
One thing about the, for Water and Sewer and the schools, I think they combine the election ballot and the Articles ballot.
No, we don't.
You don't?
Water and Sewer doesn't.
Water and Sewer doesn't. Okay, so you have a separate ballot for officers, elective officers.
Always been that way.
Okay, how about the schools? Is that the same? Does anybody know?
There, there are two separate ballots. There's one for the as well as a separate one for the Pemme Baker officers. There's only one ballot for the Plummer School District, which is their officers only.
Okay, so we don't have any problem getting a change in the way we format ballots, is all I'm saying. Okay, asking.
That makes it easier to put in the machines.
Right.
Right.
The question is whether or not you want to have a virtual deliberative session, or if you want to have an in-person deliberative session.
At my preference, but is anybody on the board want to contribute to an answer to that, or?
I think we really have for the, for the town deliberative session. I think we have to go virtual just because of the attendance numbers in person.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like we have much of a choice.
John's shaking his head, and I haven't seen Neil move, so.
It's actually statue of Neil. Not really him.
Most towns, I think, they're doing two things. Some small town are kicking their, their meetings out to, you know, April, May, or June with the hope that things will be safer out there. You know, these are towns that, you know, ordinarily have people, you know, get together. But in small numbers, and then larger towns are going with virtual just because of the safety constraints that they have and, you know, and trying to be able to you know, do it in the safest manner possible.
Yeah, I don't see us being in a particularly better place, you know, in those few months.
No, I'm just describing, you know, the discussions that I've heard small towns, you know, is, small towns make. And, and the other thing is, small towns, you know, like Chesterfield and some of the other small towns, it's much more manageable to do drive-up voting at the business section because you just don't have that many cars showing up, whereas at larger towns like, you know, Plymouth, that, that could be a ton of cars, and again, it presents, you know, management issues. And so that's why I like New Market, for instance, you know, they're convinced that they can do a safe election, but what they really don't want it to have is a deliberative session where a lot of people are all in the same room together. And so that's why they went with the, you know, the virtual approach to their deliberative session.
I am.
I, I just want to say that unfortunately, there are people that don't do virtual, and they're good citizens.
They can always join by phone. They can also join by phone, Neil.
Yeah. Well, that, yeah.
Or we could invite them over to our house for a few small group.
I'd have to clean the house.
You know, um, I think, I think because we're going to be sending postcards out to all registered voters, we're going to see a larger turnout this year at the deliberative sessions. You know, what our office has always done is, you know, if we wanted to, we could send out the message that anyone who needs assistance to connect, we can offer that type of support to visit. You know, we've done that for a few residents for other things, not, you know, electronical support, you know. I think, you know, we have that, you know, small town type of community still, even though we're a bit larger. But I think what we're really searching for tonight is a decision because even though if we go along with the alternative drive-through setting, schedule, we really need to start planning now and to set a date. So we can put pen to paper on all of this because we want to do our best job and have the nicest quality as possible. So it would really mean a lot if we can come to a decision, if the board is ready to do that.
A lot of this is on the shoulders of the board. If you come up with a budget that is really close, you're not going to have a turnout at all. If you have a budget that is something that is far different than what you have right now, then that's when you're going to get pushed back. If people see that things are pretty much the same, I don't think they're going to bother to even come to a deliberative session.
Probably not, but we'll have to make sure that we offer that opportunity to them.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm thinking it might not be such a mess as we're afraid it's going to be, but we have to prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
Right. And that's why we have John Radigan on, on board. In case someone takes exception to that, which is kind of peculiar. Well, obviously, it's a peculiar time anyway, but we've got John, who represents the town. We've got NHMA, who represents all the cities and towns. And then we have
Town clerk who disagrees with NHMA.
It's the Secretary of State office, and I, and I thoroughly respect Bud, but you know, if you get three different answers, who are you going to go with? And I'm thinking John because we pay John. I think.
Whatever direction you guys choose, you know, I'll, I'll work with, you know, obviously with Kathy and Josie, we will get this right. There will be no problems with it. You know, I did two of these for towns, you know, last, you know, last fall, so we already know what the drill is. We've done already some multiple, you know, this spring, this spring or late winter. So we'll get this straight, and you guys will communicate effectively. And the big thing is, which I don't know, which you guys are experts at, is what works best for your town and what, you know, this is really, this is a social and a political and a community decision. And that's where you guys are the experts.
Correct. And since this is primarily an election, or most of it is an election, then I think we defer to the people that do the elections, too. So Josie and Bob, I think, are instrumental, but. So that being said, so John, you're going to check with Bud to see if he's, might reconsider his answer?
Yeah.
Or, and I guess it really doesn't matter a whole, you know, horribly a lot, but, you know, whatever he states, that's fine. But I think if we can go with at least a go-ahead on, 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 you know, an option to go to do the election in a deliberative session, that would be good.
Are you saying to follow Josie's timeline that she had given you?
Yeah, I think so. That's my thought, regardless of what.
Her second timeline or her first timeline?
I'm thinking the second timeline.
Second.
I have your second one or your first?
I mailed it out last night. I don't think, and I don't have it yet.
And so are, are you deciding, I understand that you want to, you know, continue the deliberative session till later. Are you going to do it virtually so that, you know, you'll have the, you know, the, basically, the two information sessions with feedback from voters, you know, and constituents between the first and the second?
Would you like me to screen share Josie's schedule? Would that be helpful rather than talking?
Yeah, because I don't think everyone has a, referring to it. So yeah, that would be beneficial. Yeah, please, Zach.
Andrew, can we screen share that, please?
Yeah, I can, I can make the dates work. I just wanted to understand the concept, not having read it. I mean, are you talking about a virtual meeting with two, with two public information sessions?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's easy. That's easy for me to manage.
Are, is Andrew still there?
Yeah.
Andrew, did you allow Zach to share a screen? Oh. Well, you, you got the mouse.
So what am I pushing here? I'm not sure I had to do this.
Just promote me to co-host.
What's that?
The green one? Share our screen.
Yeah, don't you share?
Where is Andrew? Is Dulles downstairs? Because maybe he's.
Go to participants.
Yeah, there you go. Yay. Okay, well, it'll let you now?
Yeah. Everybody see that?
Yep.
Yep.
I was on until like 10:30 last night, but I didn't see it, so.
Hey, I'm going to, can you, do you want me to forward this to John here?
Yeah, I saw this. I mean, the one, one set of dates that jumps out at me is that, you know, House Bill 1129 in section Roman numeral, I think it's who, yeah, specifies that within seven days of the first information session, it doesn't say first, but it's the information session. The governing body shall hold another live virtual meeting to consider and address the comments. So you have to do that within seven days.
This spacing doesn't work where it's, it's laid out as 15 days.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's, that's the first thing that jumped out at me.
Anne's pulling up her schedule right now.
So you think the March 15th is not going to work? Is that what you're saying, John?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I think if you're going to have March 1st as the first date, then you probably would need to have, you know, March.
Anyone interested in a Saturday, March 6th?
We've talked about weekend. Yes, I mean, that's.
Bob, would that work for you at all? Bob, would that work for you at all or?
I'll make it work. It's my job.
All right, so March 6th. The Saturday.
And then maybe the deadline to submit questions and concerns should be Thursday, uh, March 4th. That would give you guys a day to finalize. Thank you for catching that, John.
Sure.
March 6th.
Bill, I have a question. Has anyone thought about using the National Guard Armory as a spot to hold the in-person meeting? I don't know if it will hold the many people or if, because there are COVID vaccine locations.
I was gonna say, I think we can't even count on the Armory. There are COVID vaccine sites.
Yeah.
I can't imagine.
And also the room size doesn't have any effect on the state's 100-person requirement in a room.
Okay.
On March 6th.
Uh, yeah, so what, what about time on March 6th?
One o'clock might be good.
Can I do a one o'clock, Josie's saying?
I think it'd be a good thing to try that on a Saturday to see what the response is from the citizens.
Yep.
All right, so then we'll do that. And then we'll have March 9th will be the elections.
This way, this way, if they do say, if the state does finally decide or whatever, we come up with a decision that the warrant articles would be able to be voted on absentee, which personally to myself, I don't agree with because people weren't allowed to vote if they weren't at town meeting. Then you've got plenty of time to do everything here, uh, without any problem at all, either way.
Right. True.
Does the board think that three hours for the drive-through vote, voting is enough time on Tuesday, April 13th? What Josie was thinking is that town meetings probably last about three hours, so that's why she was using that. But I didn't know with the drive-through if it may take a little longer or.
It will, I would think.
All right, you wanna make it six?
Maybe it's that two hours earlier?
Two to seven, yeah.
Good.
Did we do a two to seven, Bob?
Yep.
He's pretty agreeable this morning.
That's unlike me, I know.
I'm gonna get you up early more often.
Want me to read it or? Okay, so, um, the new schedule is Thursday, February 4th. That will be the second public hearing for the budget, which is already set in stone. Um, Monday, February 15th is the day we'll mail out notices to registered voters. Monday, uh, March 1st will be our first deliberative session. We've changed this, uh, the deadline to submit questions and concerns to Thursday, March 4th. And then the second deliberative session will be March 6th, which is a Saturday. The annual election will remain on the 9th. And from there on, the only other change is the timeframe for the drive-through voting, which will be longer, two to seven. So those are only changes we're making. Or the board will be approving.
Um, after you update this, will you send out new copies, please?
I'll do that, Bob.
Yeah, just so you know, not that you, you know, you'd necessarily, you know, push it back. You've, you're giving yourself plenty of time to mail out the notice to registered voters on February 15th. You, you're only required to do it seven days in ahead, but, you know, and, and it's fine, given post office has been slow, you know, sometimes this winter, um, the, uh, that, that looks like that'll work fine.
Postcards are gonna work, right, John? We don't have to do a formal letter.
That's correct. You just have to all, have all the information on it. And, um, like I said, a, a good place to start would be to look at, you know, the, the ones that, uh, you know, the approach that was taken by, uh, New Market and, uh, as to how they mailed that out. That was a postcard.
All right. Um, sounds like a plan. Anybody else have any comment on it or?
How, how, just, just for purposes of description, um, on, on the date of the, um, business session, how are you going to, um, handle that? Is that gonna be, um, entirely drive-through or in-person with a couple of spots for people who wanna drive up and not go into the building?
My, I mean, my thoughts are, is that we're probably gonna have to do a dual thing where if they wanna come in, they can.
Right.
We'll have some people inside. The supervisors will probably be inside because they're the ones that are gonna be following the checklist. So we will need some personnel versus what Josie had thought at the beginning. Uh, supervisors are not supposed to be checking off names on the checklist. They have to be ballot clerks and other things that, you know, need to be looked at.
Bob, are you still hoping to do that at the elementary school?
That's my next question that I was gonna ask. If we're doing, uh, if we do it that way, I think we could do it at the elementary school and, uh, maybe make a routing, uh, process, but I'm, you know, we have not reserved the elementary school for that day. Uh, that might be an issue. They plan on being in session. Uh, so we might need to find an alternate location.
Yeah, I would say if they're in session, there's not much room.
Nope.
To move cars in and out of there pretty much. I mean, most days, all the spots are taken here.
Yep.
Yeah, and pretty much all the way up until five and sometimes a little after five.
Right.
Correct, very correct.
I think, um, I think I could contact Gail Shaw. She's the director of the senior center. I feel that she would be very, I think she would help us out. Maybe we could use the senior center as an alternative location.
That's a possibility. But that, that needs to be thought through.
That can be a tricky area too. There's a lot of car parking down there.
Yep.
And with all attention, those, a lot of parking.
Uh, no, we're not. That's, that's the ways. Yeah, they're looking to fall.
Great.
So, so, you know, what New Market wrote, you know, um, about their, you know, business session is, it says, you know, we will reserve parking spaces for drive-through voting at, at town hall. This will allow people to come in to town hall. Uh, this will allow people to come to town hall, call and, and someone will bring out a ballot to all persons who want to vote from the safety of their own vehicle. So, do you wanna communicate that, you know, you'll be, um, conducting the business section voting safely within the building, uh, for voters to come in and those, then for those who are reluctant to come in, they can come to the space, call, we'll bring out a ballot, you know, and.
I think that's the best way because otherwise a drive-through, we don't have a spot in town to be able to line people up to get them through like that.
Right, right, exactly. And, and that's, that's the thing that I, I think the board will wanna communicate to people is that we're gonna handle this, you know, the same way. I, I assume that's the way you, you handled elections back in November, right?
We actually, yeah, safely. We actually had voting outside. I don't wanna do that again.
Right, but the.
Quite doesn't either.
Right now is that we, we can't do it at the element, if we can't do it at the elementary school, we have to find another location to have the inside.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe this week, before the end of the week, we can come up with a few different locations and call around and see, you know, maybe the university, for example, would let us use the parking at Silver Center.
I, the, the other issue that comes up is, is that, you know, um, you've gotta look at, you know, the authority to choose alternate locations. I, I know that the, so you're, you're only got, you're only gonna have one location, right? Not a second one? Because the second one requires a vote by town meeting.
One location.
Okay, all right. So I think that's the, that's the thing that we'll need to do, obviously, before, and we have plenty of time before, you know, getting the mailing out, is to identify, uh, where the location would be. And it seems to me that, you know, the, if historically people have voted at the school, you know, to give people, um, the same place, you know, to go that they've gone before, will make it, I think, a much easier for people to, um, you know, to, to vote rather than going to a place that they'd never been before, you know, if you're gonna, if you can arrange that.
I'm looking at the school calendar for April, and there aren't any days off except for April Vacation Week, which is April 26th. And that week, we are closed and most likely there will not be any programs that week for deep cleaning, et cetera.
So I, I guess the question is, you know, uh, I, I know that you can, I wonder if you could continue it to other than a Tuesday, you know? Be- because, you know, most, most, a lot, lots of towns have the business section on a Saturday, you know? And I understand if you, if you're changing the voting session, the election day, it goes to a Tuesday. But it seems to me that you have the authority to, you know, choose a different date and Saturday, you know, might make the school available because, you know, A, you can work out with them cleaning afterwards, you know? And they won't need.
Sorry, John.
Yeah, that's all.
Um, I do have a question. You may know, HP, uh, the House Bill 1129, does that state that we have to hold the postponed voting day on a second Tuesday of April, May, June, or July? Or is there flexibility with when we can do that?
Um, I, I'm pretty sure that what it addresses is, um, at least the, the governor's order, you know, talks about the official ballot voting date be on the second Tuesday of April, May, June, or July. Um, and then it goes on to say that the governing body may postpone the business or deliberative session uh, of the annual meeting to one or more dates in 2021. So there's no specificity as to what date the business session has to be on, what day of the week.
We've always put our business session on Wednesday. We've always had a choice of putting it when we wanted to, so, yeah.
Right, so that's still maintained.
Right.
Then the question becomes, you know, again, you're working with the school, you know, that has constraints. You wanna be pressed, be able to use that. So if you, you know, it, it could be that Saturday, you know, uh, might work better with the school. It's just something to think about.
I think that's an excellent idea. I really do. I think that would solve everything because now the school isn't gonna have to try to flip their schedule around. And you have the same place that people are used to voting at. And you basically can pick any Saturday in, uh, whenever you want, after the, after the articles have been published and available.
I agree.
Or the 17th? Saturday?
We're trying to get away from the school vacation.
But I think we're looking.
17?
Yeah, if, if the, if the school's okay with that, well, maybe just shoot for the 17th.
In same times or?
Yeah.
Two to seven?
Yeah. On a Saturday, uh, you might not need to have it as long. Because, uh, you're not competing with most people working, but if we had a, a shorter time, if they're coming in to vote, to process, uh, at an, at a usual election for town elections or for a town meeting, if you have 250 people, that's, that's a lot. You might be able to use a shorter time period.
It looks to me like the language in House Bill 1129 says that the governing body can schedule the date and time.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see any restriction to a particular Tuesday as written in there.
Lisa, um, is there, would there be a problem with a Saturday? Maybe the 17th?
I just reached out to Kyla Welch and she said that would work really well.
Excellent. Great.
Thank you.
And Anne brought up a good question. Um, if we do it on a Saturday, it would probably work better if we did 12 to 5.
Fine.
That way, you know, for people who have lives, they can go ahead and do that at night.
Yeah, the days of COVID, nobody has.
I don't have one.
Nothing else to do, a chance to come out and vote. I mean, really.
We're gonna be overrun.
Or, or, or even earlier. I mean, I know most, a lot, most towns that, especially that I'm aware of, they're starting at nine o'clock.
Nine, yep. I was gonna say that, nine to noon.
Yeah, and they're all, right, exactly. And they're always done by noon or morning.
Yes.
Okay, nine to noon then?
We're shooting for early. We're good.
About 8:00 AM, Mary Ann.
I don't think I'll be voting. I don't know.
Well, the other nice thing about, the other nice thing about starting early is, is that with the cleaning issue, right? You've got the rest of the Saturday available for someone to come in and do the cleaning.
Right.
Without having to go on to a Sunday or Saturday night.
And counting as well.
Right, right, right.
So what time are we talking now? We're just trying to.
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon?
Yep.
Now we're back to three hours.
Let's take him 12:45.
Well, you know, if you still have people online that wanna vote, you're not gonna shut them out.
I will never shut off anybody that comes up until the time.
Right.
So we could go to one or two.
It possibly if people, but after I announce the polls are closing, if they're not in line, they, like, I can't keep it open legally.
Yep. I don't know what I can do, but.
All right. Any other loose ends or we're pretty much there?
Bill, do you need an official motion from the board?
Yeah, maybe so.
Is this, is this an official meeting that you can do that at or do you have to? Okay, I just wanna dot the i's.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, um, Zach, would you wanna propose?
Yeah, I, I wanna move that we go to the alternative ballot rules with a virtual session with the schedule outlined. Checking.
Okay, that was a quick one. Uh, Zach moved, uh, Neil seconded, um, John, oh, any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, John, your vote?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Bill? Hi. Why is that?
Good.
Josie, thanks for putting this together.
Yeah.
The timeline.
On it.
Really helpful.
And mind the schools will help you out any way we can. And if it's Saturdays or Sundays, drive-through town meeting, whatever, where we can, we can.
Thank you.
Josie, I'll, I'll be back in touch with you as soon as I, uh, you know, hear from the, as soon as I have my talk with, uh, Mr. Fitch.
Okay, all right. NHMA is calling today too. I think Elizabeth is, I mean, she's the director.
All right, but they, I mean, we're not anticipating any kind of change from them.
Yeah, no, I think, I think if, I think they're calling just to clarify what my conversation was with Bud Fitch. And if they have to make any changes or if they contact Bud, then they're gonna proceed with a new, probably a new statement, something like that.
Right, exactly, right.
If what Bud said, Fitch is true, then you still have time to accommodate that. Uh, as far as an absentee on the town meeting, as I, I don't want that, but I'm saying we still have time in this schedule to accommodate that if that's what ends up having to happen.
Well, the idea I think is, if we were to have, which we're not now, but if we were going to proceed with having, um, the voting on the warrant articles on election day, then it would be considered a election ballot because we'd have requests for all ballots from absentee ballots, or, excuse me, absentee voters. Because we're having it after now, I don't think we'd have to send out absentee ballot request, or absentee ballots.
I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, just in case, we have.
We do, which is nice.
Yeah, not that I want that, but I'm saying just in case we have time. All right.
Very good. All right, well, unless there's any other, other business, I guess we're probably, uh, safe to stop the needle.